...who is the high school director here in Caldwell County Schools and also her father, who is Mike McKellen, a math teacher and coach at High Rock High School. So if you would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mikey. Thank you for being here. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and awards that an opportunity to review the agenda for a few days. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as presented? Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Next, you see that we have a series of open and closed session minutes, and a lot of this, of course, had to do with superintendent search. So we're going to do these by date. On March the 5th, 2018, we had an open session. We had a closed session also on that same date. So do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of the open meeting as well as that of the closed meeting on March 5th?
Chairman, panel, I move that we approve both the open and closed minutes for March 5th, 2018.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. The next date is March 26th. Once again, an open and a closed session on March 26th, 2018. Do I hear a motion for the minutes of that particular date?
Chairman, panel, I move that we approve both sets of minutes for the March 26th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes. Two days later, on March 28th, we had another open session, followed by a closed session. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 28th meetings?
I'll make the motion we approve the March 28th open and closed meetings.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. The next day, on March 29th, we had a, excuse me, an open as well as another closed session. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of both meetings on March 29th?
Chairman, panel, I'll make the motion we approve the minutes for the open and closed session meetings on March 29th.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes. One more here. March 25th, 2018. I'm sorry. We had four in March, so now we move to April. April 25th, 2018, we had an open session, and we also had a closed session. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of the April 25th meeting?
Chairman, panel, I move that we approve the minutes for the April 25th open and closed session.
Second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes. As we move along on the agenda, a couple of announcements. We will have a board meeting here in this room on July the 9th, and also, and that will be at 5 o'clock. That'll be a 5 o'clock meeting. Our summer meetings are at 5. In September, we'll move back to 6, unless there's some kind of change. That's the plan anyway. Also, on July the 9th, we have a special called Work Session, and that's going to be at 2 o'clock, and that's going to be here at the Education Center. And basically, there's one major item that's going to be discussed at that meeting, and that is moving forward with the Granite Falls Middle School Building Project. So that will be on July the 9th, the special work session, followed by 5 o'clock board Next item on the agenda is finance, and I'm going to recognize our finance director, Mr. David Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Stone, I have a few budget amendments tonight. The first one is Budget Amendment Number 16, it's for the State Public School Fund. It is an increase to the State Public School Fund in the amount of $1,150,252. The second one I have is the Current Expense Fund, Budget Amendment Number 17. It is a transfer between purpose codes only. It is no change to the total budget. Budget Amendment Number 18 is for the Federal Grant Fund. It's an increase, federal funds, $110,042. Budget Amendment Number 19 is for Capital Outlay Fund. It recognizes revenue and expenses for the lease, purchase, installment of the school Budget Amendment Number 20 is for, is a decrease in the Child Nutrition Fund. It is to align actual revenue with expenses. Budget Amendment Number 21 is a decrease in the Wraparound Fund to align with actual revenues received. And the last one I have is for the Special Grants Fund, is Budget Amendment Number 22. It is an increase in the Special Grants Fund and to align with the purpose codes, an increase of $105,000. If approved and submitted, this will bring the total budget for Caldwell County Schools to $125,269,97.80. I'd like to request that it be approved and submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the above budget amendments as they have been presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone any comments? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The last thing I have is for the 2018-2019 interim budget resolution. General Statute 115(c)(434) requires us to adopt an interim budget anytime we do not have an official budget by July 1st. I know the state's approved a budget, however, we still do not have the allotments, so until I get the allotments, we'll have to operate on the interim resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the 2018-19 interim budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, Superintendent, Dr. Steve Stone.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the audience, I have two items for tonight's consideration of the board. The first is the resolution concerning the sale of certain real estate property owned by the Caldwell County Board of Education. As you know, we have vacated the Horizons Building. We've advertised it. We've received a bid from the town of Hudson, so the administration recommends approval of the resolution, selling the real property to the town of Hudson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the sale of the Horizons Building to the town of Hudson as laid out in the resolution.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, and congratulations, Town of Hudson. We expect great things out of that building with the community college, so looking forward to a great history there. You're getting a good building, and we know you'll put it to good purpose, so thank you for being patient with us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have two administrative recommendations I would like to make tonight. You have seen their resumes. The first one will be for Collinsville. I am recommending Larry J. McCarrer.
McCarrer.
McCarrer, thank you. I don't have to remember his name. Somebody else has. If you know much about me, names are not my thing, but I have had a chance to meet with Jay, and he is a phenomenal candidate, selected by the interview team with glowing remarks, so my recommendation is that we approve Larry J. McCarrer.
McCarrer.
McCarrer. I've got to put the her on. For a two-year term beginning July 1, for principal of Collinsville Elementary School.
Do I hear a motion that we approve Larry J. Carrer for a two-year contract beginning on July 1st?
Chairman, panel, I make a motion we approve Larry J. McCarrer.
Go ahead, your turn.
He will answer to Jay for the position of principal of Caldwell. I'm sorry, college.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you. My last administrative recommendation is to fill a vacancy created at West Caldwell High School. I'd like to recommend Mrs. Brooke Kaiser-Cooper. That one was easy, Brooke, thank you. Brooke has served as an interim, an administrative interim at Dudley Shoals, has done a phenomenal job there. Would like to recommend Brooke Kaiser-Cooper for a two-year term as assistant principal of West Caldwell High School, beginning July 1.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Brooke Kaiser-Cooper for the position of assistant principal at West Caldwell High School with a two-year contract beginning July 1.
Second the motion.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Chairman, Brooke is here. Brooke, you want to stand up and introduce yourself? You've got two minutes to do that, but go ahead.
Up here or from here?
Up here. Up here would be good. We get it on camera up here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Stone, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm so excited to continue my stay here in Caldwell County. Getting the call, I was actually in the middle of a run, and it actually made me run harder because I was so excited, so thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm so excited to work with Craig and the rest of the administrative team to just further the education of these kids. I'm super pumped, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Brooke.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Adrienne Dula, who we appointed last month as the principal of Gainwell Elementary, so Adrienne, you get your two minutes.
Thanks, Dr. Stone.
You're welcome.
It's just great to be back home. Catawba County was really good to me, but I think my plan all along was to come back home. I actually grew up in Gainwell and live in Gainwell, so I'm excited about coming back. Lots of work to do, and I'm excited. Yeah, thank you.
We're glad you came home.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the superintendent comments, I just want to take a moment of privilege to thank the board members for your support over the last 12 years, administrators and all who were present. Particularly, let me start, it's been 12 years of the labor of love. I cannot believe today is the last day. It will hit me tomorrow when I get up, but it's been a great 12 years. I have been very fortunate to have worked with everyone in the room, and so many others have been very fortunate to have called Caldwell County my home. I heard Mayor Barry Hayes from Granite Falls say that there are many people who are very fortunate and blessed to have been born in Caldwell County, and I was not, but I am very fortunate and blessed to call it my home. So thank you very much for allowing me to be a part of this community. To the Board of Education, you've been very supportive over the last 12 years. You have certainly come together as a team. You have made this system move forward through your cohesiveness and through your ability to work together and being out there in the schools. You will find, Don, that this board is very active. You certainly have set the stage for success, and so I thank you for giving me the opportunity. Dottie and Tim were on the board when I was hired. Michael Bros back there, one of our county commissioners, was on the team that hired me 12 years ago, so I appreciate that opportunity, but over the years of working with all of you, I certainly appreciate that as well. To those of you in the central office, thank you. You are family for your expertise. Carol, Jeff, Trish, David, everyone, I don't want to begin calling names, but you certainly have given me a taste in culture of Caldwell County. You've corrected my spelling. You've corrected my language sometimes. You certainly have pointed me in the right directions with names and other things, but could not have done it without you. You are a big family, and I am going to certainly miss that. To all the district administrators out there, the district is much better because of you every day, what you do, you and your administrative role, to your staff, for the great opportunities that they provide for kids every day, because we do know that's where it happens, in the classroom, but it's because of wonderful teachers in this county, and all staff really do that. For the parents, you know, thank you for trusting the public schools of Caldwell County for the last 12 years to educate your child. We try to do the best, and we hope that you are proud of the school system as we are, but we thank you every day for giving us an opportunity to work with your child. To the community, there are a number of community folks here. I see, thank you, Jack, for being here, Jack Coke, who's the executive director for the North Carolina Association of School Administrators. We appreciate your being here. Got a couple of other town officials and other community leaders. I want to thank you as well for embracing me as a part of this community, and one of the things, Don, you'll find about Caldwell County is very quickly you will call it home, and they will embrace you. Barbara Armstrong with the Chamber of Commerce, you will have plenty of opportunities to be engaged in this community. And so finally, Don, to you, I wish you well. You're going to love it. You and your family will find this to be the most caring, most wonderful place. They will embrace you as you will embrace them, and you will find you will have a harder working Board of Education or community to work with. It's a good place. It's got some work that can be done, which you're the man to do that, but we appreciate your coming here and making this your home as well, so you will enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
I think that the board has had opportunity over a series of weeks and events and so forth to thank Dr. Stone for all that he has done. We are certainly a better school system because of Dr. Stone's 12 years in Caldwell County, and we are very grateful for that. Board, if you'll join me down front here. Dr. Stone, if you could come down as well, please.
I'm not coming, Darrell. You'll have to fire me. You'll have to fire me.
Yeah, you've been wanting that for about a month now.
In my contract, if they fire me, they have to give me a year and a half salary. I've got another 15 minutes.
Dr. Stone, much has been said about your dedicated service to Caldwell County Schools, and this has particularly been true since you announced your retirement last September. In the past month or two, you have received many congratulations, many thank yous, and many gifts from across the county, expressing the appreciation and sincere gratitude for the great job that you have done for the past 12 years and four days. Longest-serving superintendent, okay. But now, there is another expression of appreciation. This one is from the state of North Carolina. The Order of the Longleaf Pine is among the most prestigious awards presented by the governor of North Carolina. The Order of the Longleaf Pine is presented to individuals who have a proven record of extraordinary service to their communities and to the state. Dr. Stone has dedicated 38 years to education, 34 of those in the state of North Carolina, and 20 of those as a superintendent. Let me read what we have here on this. State of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of William "Steve" Stone. I do by these presents confer the Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of ambassador extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the longleaf pine, the summer land where the sun doth shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State, signed by Governor Roy Cooper, dated June 28, 2018. Quite an honor. I'm certainly most humbled and proud to call Caldwell County home. At this time, we are pleased to have the Honorable Dan Keener, Superior Court Judge for the 25th A Judicial District of North Carolina, to administer the oath to Dr. Donald Phipps to be the new superintendent of the Caldwell County Schools. Dr. Phipps?
Come on up, Dr. Phipps. If I may just ask five more. All right. Now, what I'm going to do is, if you'll just repeat after me, I'll do it real short. All right, and you've got a chance to repeat. I state your name.
I, Don Wayne Phipps.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
To faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of superintendent of Caldwell County Schools.
Perform the duties of superintendent of Caldwell County Schools.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established for the government thereof.
Or may be established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, can I have a point of privilege?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm not from Caldwell County. I'm from Burke County, and I've known Dr. Stone for a little while, and he's known far and wide, and the honor just bestowed upon him is very appropriate. And Mr. Phipps, you are, as a new superintendent, you are, I think one of them said I don't know, it was Dr. Stone or who, you're entering a family here. I can tell you that since becoming a Superior Court Judge almost four years ago, Caldwell County is like home to me. In fact, in some ways, some of the folks here that I know feel more like my home than even being in Burke County, but you're going to, you really will enjoy it here. I do want to tell you and all the board that the Chief Justice of the North Carolina Supreme Court started an initiative about a year or so ago, along with two justices, Justice Paul Newby and Justice Jimmy Irvin from, Sam J. Irvin IV from Burke County, to help not only the school system, but just the public generally, to know more about the court system. And so they, the Chief Justice twisted a lot of folks' arms, and mine included, to ask for volunteers to speak to the groups at schools and public groups and that sort of thing about the court system and about local, I mean, about the state government. I used to be, I talk about local government a lot, because I used to be county attorney. Don't hold that against me, because I know that sometimes there's tension there. My partner, John Jones, who died a few years ago, was Burke County School Board Attorney for some period of time. I have a lot of respect and a lot of love for our local schools and our local institutions, but I did want to make that offer to the board and to you and to any of the principals that are here, just please get ahold of me through Justine Tate, Trial Court Coordinator for 25A, which is Burke in Caldwell County, be very happy to speak with any group or school or class or assembly, you know, and try to help folks know more about what judges do and what the judiciary does. But I'm honored to be here. Destin Hall, your School Board Attorney, called me up, and usually, I tell the lawyers what to do, but I don't tell Destin no, and you've got a very good School Board Attorney in Destin Hall, and I think the world of him. But thank you for the honor for me to be here, both to see Dr. Stone at his retirement, as well as being here to honor you, Dr. Phipps, for your new role, and I do wish you the very best. And there's no signature line. Normally, we sign these things. If there's, if you get another form that comes out later, you want me to sign it, I'll be happy to do that, so you can have that oath framed, okay?
It's underneath in the red folder.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Very good. Look at that. So I'm going to go ahead and sign this, and I guess what I'll do is I'll hand this up to you, and then you can sign it.
There's three copies.
That way you... Absolutely. Well, I do appreciate, you know, I've got a tough old German name, and I do appreciate the chairman pronouncing my name correctly. It's a...
Back to my kitchen.
I was told by somebody in the audience, who I won't name, but who is a county commissioner, I believe, that if you, running in a place like Burke in Caldwell County with an unusual last name is pretty difficult, but he said, but he was told that if you win, that you stand a pretty good chance of getting reelected, because they remember your name. So I hope that's the case. Thank you, Mike. In any event, I have signed these. Sir, I'll hand this up to you if I may approach.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to shake off this and thank you. It's been a while.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Secretary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I be excused?
Sure. We want to thank the Honorable Dan Keener for being here and administering the oath, so thank you very much for coming over from Burke County.
I wouldn't have missed it. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Phipps, we are certainly happy that you're here. We welcome you to Caldwell County and the Caldwell County School System, and we, as a board, are 100% behind you. We want to make sure that you're successful, because if you are successful, Caldwell County Schools will be successful. And we look forward to working with you and your leadership and continued growth here in Caldwell County for many years to come. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Phipps, make some comments, introduce your family.
I'm just grateful for the opportunity and look forward to working with the board and the community and the employees and just everybody in this county to do great things. With me tonight, I have my wife Nancy. She's holding our grandchild, Avery Claire. Callie is a daughter, Savannah. Katie is a daughter-in-law, Melissa, and then son Noah, and then behind them are my mother and father-in-law, Les and Pat Hawkins. I'm just thrilled to have them here with me tonight. I thank you all for this opportunity.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
All right. Anybody? It's been a good, been a good day. Congratulations, Dr. Stone, on the honor there. With nothing else, do I hear a motion we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. We are adjourned. Everybody have a great rest of the summer. Take some time for yourself and spend some time with your family.